Okay.
Good deal. Well, I keep it, try to keep it calm, to guess what, maybe they won't hang out tomorrow.
Alright, that's, so we got meeting, we'll be there shortly, I'll put supporting docs on there.
Hello?
You, you doing that? Walk, take a second.
I already got, I was just making sure that I had the last agenda, because I was trying to get my email to, and it wouldn't come across. I'll do it tomorrow, honestly. I'm getting it, get it together.
Hey, how you doing, sir?
Hello? Want to see it all?
That's cool, isn't it?
Quite comfortable, I don't really like being in twenty minutes, I don't know.
How you doing?
How are you? Doing well? How you doing?
Alright, yourself?
Alright.
Do we have a full term code working officer?
For one more day.
One more day?
This is a very not another easy, um, place somebody in a position just for three.
To work?
To do, to do this, to get somebody somewhere.
Is he going to be doing code, or just smash patrol into?
Uh, code special investigation.
I don't know what the problem is, I don't know. Code enforcement here. You guys, man? Code? How you doing?
Alright, man.
I got you a PC in today, um, well, actually I came in yesterday, I've been upgrading it and getting it all ready.
You didn't, you went to the time for it?
Huh?
You didn't went to the time for it?
Nah, I think, I saw. I think, uh, hopefully it'll do what he needs.
It solves the problem.
I hope it solves the problem, get rid of that old machine anyway, so. So, anyway. How's it going?
Very well, so how are you?
That's good.
Good.
Hey, sir.
Cheers. I didn't get my jacket.
There it is.
Hey, Bradger.
Actually, I, I go to another thing, yeah, so. Yeah, I'll see.
See what's happening, hey? She's got all the time, well, it's great. Oh, that's.
Is that all we're doing, picture?
Yeah.
She put a dress on, you would know.
Is that right?
That sounds kind of interesting. I had a guy in the morning. Some, here she come in, oh man, right, we addressed.
Oh, yeah.
Hair fixed.
How you doing? Oh, so it was like a day. Find out.
Oh, yeah.
Is that just, you guys can keep coming straight over.
You, uh, pat him down, make sure he's not.
Someone asked me about the weapons, man. About the thing, said, no thing. Of course, it's been you, no. No, 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 I said, someone asked me about.
Um, I'm actually a journalist, I'm a journalist.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I'm sure using myself to everybody, I can't use it here.
Okay, well, I'm, I'm, nice to meet you. Not, not to God.
Oh, yes, I'm sure. Yeah, we always do.
We do a lot of research. Really?
Um, yes, I, whenever, if I ever can't make a turn, this is how I get my information.
I sell working products, yeah.
Absolutely.
That's what I understand. People, um, elderly people cannot do that.
It's, um, or.
What was that related to?
Miss Kendra? Miss Kendra, one of our former editors, she actually just left.
Yeah, I, I, you know, I just been doing this not too long, since taking off here, and, uh, so she, she, she can sit back here.
I don't know of them, I don't know yet.
She said it, said she's starting her own.
Yeah.
Starting her own paper?
That, is that paper?
Yeah.
It's something, yeah.
Uh, clean up day over there.
In the process of hiring a new journalist to fill her spot, and they should be coming in next week. They followed Gold, uh, so their last time did a subpoena here.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Take a little, one, maybe.
I remember Warner Robbins, some government, they, uh. What works, kind of, that I do now?
I got stuff you said, you'll see.
Okay, Chris.
You open. And I have hurts.
I spent this week, I spent two hours in Hawaii, riding the city. Too many, I mean, I just tipped it off. Tipped it off.
But, is that? I don't do it. I tear it up for you, for like, on my first round.
I get, it's already budget time.
Yes. My time, I gotta get that done, I will. This is where I lose that feature.
Yeah.
Oh, okay, yeah, when I said to you something.
Did I, did I say something?
Very nice, you did a good job.
Yeah, I'm using adults. Why do you do something to do when I, as I said? I'm on a hundred, I'm on a five always, but.
Really?
Which last two years? You know, it's, we, probably wish I was having a cell.
How's it going?
That does, sir.
I may also.
It's a new device. Yeah. I saw, I saw on the.
There's caps like it.
You guys are, what's the tech?
Caps, or small ones.
Yeah. How was your trip?
Oh, Bob was good, man, good fun.
Oh, okay.
Now, spring, go more right.
Where's that for?
Just one page?
Oh, how was it?
Oh, I, I thought, I thought.
A lot of stuff.
Maybe able to, I can't.
Hold on, you're standing there, and lots of stuff.
Okay, so I was.
Listen, you do some of this.
That is good. I mean, I can.
You can leave a license for you for all.
Well, if you ever find out, we're not.
Side look scan, is it left over?
Hey, Miss Carol.
We're gonna take, take.
Good.
How you doing?
Hi. How you doing today?
Alright. And seeing a couple hours then.
I know. Walking down the side. Little hand here.
Yeah, that's, yeah, that's, yeah. Sure. Bubbling everything.
That's good.
So.
That's all. I got it.
I guess. I guess. Was it just U S A disposable? I hope it will get. Nice to be there, it's been a lot of times. Fine, we fine. That, who, 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 who dealt with him? Every chance she can.
Absolutely.
She just don't, it's the afternoon, she has not a morning. Too early in the morning for her.
Yeah.
So they been over.
Yes.
They have, she tells us. Worked so many Saturdays, and we're all, just bored, nothing to do. So that's good.
Yeah, he's like, I'm kind of hard, I don't know, we don't do that.
That's good.
That's what keeps you still.
Yeah, that'll keep you good.
Very.
Four minutes.
Four?
Four minutes.
I believe we did put some checks.
Countdown.
Been a while. Oh, yes, sir.
Council.
And I need to recite them, recite them.
Well, yeah, well, now that's what they're saying. Yeah, I came to make sure that I'm doing right, just, you know.
Yep. You know how to work, church?
Yeah, I, it's like, I still, it's like, it's still like.
It's like. It's like, you know, it's like. I found, uh, I got this up here. So this is just a. Meaning, I mean, I got insane thing. It's scoring dollars. And then when I go back to it. The first time. Two, two minutes ago. They're a little better. It's still. It's been nice. So. Uh, just, uh, actually broadcasting, just broadcasting. So what I do. I, I. Do this. And I hit the minus. And then. Then back. And then.
And I'm fine. I'm fine. Okay. And I probably. Thank you. So tired, I guess it took you a long day. Yeah. Uh, I think so. I spent half the day trying to get used to this phone. Get all the info.
But what do you do?
Yes. Or count. Same song. It's just an app. Yes. And so, but it's actually been very easy. And if I had not just gotten a brand new. Apple. A Tiki's. I was actually gonna walk the user through the. Yeah. Yeah, it's good. Get my. We're shut up. I get in contact. And they also considered out everybody for a habit. So. I have a lot.
But.
It's, uh, I think there's an issue with CSI. That he was going to, he had to reach out. So. Yeah, she. So, but everything else is working.
I see. Yeah. Yes, I always like. I'll be a copper at least. Access those. Tell me. But other one. Yeah.
I'll say. Oh, wow.
Yeah, we are currently in process. Yes, sir. Things are watching.
This is a shirt that I wrote to Paul Dardan.
I'm used to that. I feel like any time. Report somewhere I go over. So it's hard to read. I mean, small. It's like. So. My neighbor. My house today. They talk. And later. Isn't that nice? She. I have.
I'm pretty sure it's so small. They were all going. About three.
Oh, I heard clearly. One hundred lot share meaning. Sort of the. Not pockets I worked. Before I worked here.
All ready?
Yes, sir, I'm ready.
You ready?
Laughing.
She's done.
You ready? You ready, sir?
Okay, if I please rise. Council Evans is gonna leave us in an implication. Now have a pledge of allegiance.
Let's pray. God, thank you for the opportunity for us to be here tonight to conduct business and serve the citizens of Centerville. I pray that you'll be with us, give us sound hearts and sound minds, so we can make great decisions for those folks that we serve. We pray this only in Jesus Christ's name.
Amen.
Amen.
Please show me the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the equality and progress of saints. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please have a seat. Thank you, everybody, for coming and thank you to all those who were streamlining with us. Uh, I know it's getting a large number of them lately and glad to have that, those people on there with us. Okay, first item we have is public comments and we have one of them listed on here. Code for the concern of Randall Wright. And Randall Wright is a former councilman here for the city. He served the city for. Few years. A few, quite a few years. We appreciate it. Mr. Wright, please come up and you know the procedure, sir.
Got a cheat sheet, so I won't forget anything. All right. My name's Randall Wright. I live at one oh eight Virginia Drive. Uh, good evening, Mayor and Council. I came before you back on July seventh, twenty twenty with several code violations. All were corrected, but one. That one being at seven twelve Davis Tribe hauling in metal items, sorting and hauling away. Fast forward to today, still hauling in. Uh, storing in larger trailer in front yard until fully loaded and then they haul away. My question. If this is gonna be allowed. Shouldn't, should not this trailer be behind the building line? Also, one oh two Montego Court. There's a fifth wheel motor home that has been there for months, almost probably a year, in the driveway. That shouldn't be there. It should be behind a building line. Two oh eight Montego Court. Motor home in driveway. One oh three. Under the nuisance section thirty four dash eighty one. Cleanliness. Of private property. Corner house at Elizabeth Ambassador's, two hundred Elizabeth. My comment on that is a blind man can see this, not miss it. It's a junkyard. Also, two, two ten Tumbleweed Circle, guarding carport. It's just a clutter of junk. Junk or non-drivable vehicles, section thirty four dash eighty eight. Can't be kept over thirty days. One oh seven Darwin bus truck, been there for months. Three seventeen Davis truck, been there a while. Corner of Bassett and House Lake, three vehicles in the backyard. Mayor and Council, this is just a tip of the iceberg. My wife and myself rode around the city Sunday for about two hours. And I understand there's only forty four miles of street in the city. So I can't see why this hadn't been, you know, these problems hadn't been taken care of. Because I mentioned this, uh. Motor home. Uh, on a. What? Montego Court or Manchester, Manchester Court. I mentioned that back six, eight months ago. I was told we didn't have a code officer. Then I was told we didn't have a police chief. Well, both of them was on board and that motor home is still sitting there. So. Like I said, this is just a tip of the iceberg of what's in the city. And if, if we don't get a handle on it, be proactive. Then we're just gonna be the swans of Warner Robbins and not Centerville. Thank you.
Thank you very much. For Thomas. Does anybody, anybody else have any comments out here? Okay. Here, Nini, we'll go on to the next item here, which is adoption of minutes. We have two, three sets of minutes. February first, twenty twenty two, regular council meeting. February the eighth, twenty twenty two, special council meeting. And February the fourteenth, twenty twenty two, council work session. I ended up taking a motion. Does the doctor, all three has written?
Some of them.
Okay.
Second.
Motion to have a second. Obviously, there's little discussions. All the papers say aye.
Aye.
All the poll, same sign? Okay. They are all approved. And adopted. Uh, I forgot to mention, one of our councilmen was not here tonight. He's involved with his church. He's on a church and then out of town. So. He said, hey, everybody. All right, old business, we had the old business tonight. New business. I have another five discussion, Dunbar, Bagel Sewer Extension. That's about myself and, uh, Branca Grumfield are gonna discuss it. You know, all, all based on, uh, a few months, well, last. October, I guess it was. We put a proposal in for, uh, state fiscal recovery funds to cover this for us. And it was a couple of things, construct a sanitary sewer trunk line on a Bagel Creek and upgrade the lift station at Overstone Crossing. And we got word last week that we did not receive it. Uh, the. City Warner Robbins and House County vote for fortune, they did receive some assistance. Perry, North Centerville received any assistance. But we still need to do these things and we're gonna find a way to do it within our own means. And. Mr. Grumfield's gonna tell us a lot in real detail.
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, and, and like, as you said in previous meeting, we, we discussed the sewer, the sewer line extension to Dunbar Road. That, that, that probably estimated at two million, seven hundred forty six thousand, one hundred fifty five dollars. Uh, less, uh. Fourth main ex- extension, which we're basically talking about three million dollars. I think, uh, we've had some discussion about maybe some GCA loans and stuff. And I've had some conversation with Miss Carol about that. And, uh, I think she can discuss the numbers a little bit better than I can, if, if you wanna.
Please.
Okay. Um, well, we do have the local recovery money and, you know, uh, that total is two million, nine hundred and forty four thousand dollars. So, um, that won't cover the whole project and Mayor Council might only wanna allocate a portion of that to the Bagel Sewer Line. And then they want to, they wanna do that, decide how much they wanna allocate to the project. And then decide if they want to finance the balance of it. I was thinking allocate two million and finance a million to GCA. You know, something like that. I don't know if y'all had any discussion.
Yeah. That makes good sense. Do something like that. Um.
Carol, you know what the GCA loan rate, the rates are right now?
They're probably, and I think, I don't think we need to go more than ten years, so I'd say one percent or less.
Right. I think if we're gonna, if we're gonna do that, we're gonna do any financing we need to, uh, get ahead of the. Interest rates going up because they are gonna go up.
Well, the, uh, the application for the GCA loan is, um, we've got to submit. The next deadline is June first. That would be an August twenty twenty one decision. The deadline after that is September one for a November twenty twenty one decision. Um, that's kinda how the application rolls.
So I'd like to leave a little hint in the, uh, question to get ahead of it.
I, I think even as the rates go up, GCA is always a lot less interest charged than your normal bands. But, yeah, I understand that.
And city has very high credit rating.
City does have very good credit rating.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Grumfield, you wanna add anything else?
Yes, sir. I guess basically what we're looking for tonight is instruction on, uh, to seek and obtain funding possibly from GCA. And, uh, basically to move forward with all the groundwork as far as engineering and, and surveying, uh, to establish and find out what, what exactly we're gonna have to do on this project.
Okay, all the other thing, a motion. Did I, did I say?
So we're gonna make a motion then that we, um, that we approve, uh, doing. The, all the groundwork and so forth, you know, for us to get the full costs and, and what, what we're gonna have to do.
And make the application.
Make the.
Have a motion, have a second.
Second.
All right. Need some discussion on this one? Anybody wanna say anything?
It's gotta be done.
That's gotta be done, wouldn't it?
They're putting it off a long time.
Yep. Future decisions there. You book those things down. Help all out people. Okay. All the papers say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All the poll, same sign? We have direction.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you, sir.
And Miss Carol. All right, next item here, Police Department, form of information, Council Evans and Chief Duncan.
Uh, Chief, I know you can step on up so that you can give us more detail. But I know that you did send some information out to the council about some of the things that you wanted to do. So that it wouldn't just be coming up tonight and you have an opportunity to have a heads up.
Right.
Uh, before that happens. Please, go ahead.
First item was a LiDAR. A LiDAR is a handheld, um, speech detector that is well, that we use in the field of each patrol officer. It is more accurate than a radar that's placed in the car. Also able to aim the LiDAR at its, its specific vehicle instead of having a beam of radar that goes out to a oncoming cars that maybe have two or three cars. We can do specific, be specific in which one we determine is being a speaker. We actually have two as on hand now. One is kinda old and I wanna have one for each shift that we have, we run four shifts. And it was placed in my, uh, budget to order some radars, LiDARs out of this budget.
Form of information, sir.
And the cost will be, uh, twenty five nineteen per radar. For a total of five thousand three hundred and eighty dollars. The second item will be, um, a replacement of a computer in the tag reader. The tag reader is, um, a tool that we use that is computerized that it visually looks at every tag that the vehicle passed by. And it runs it through the state of Georgia for any kind of violations. Right now, we have one that's, um, an older one that put in the, one of the, uh, charges that we have. The warranty ran out on six twenty one, twenty twenty one. And the part went bad, so we have to replace it at full price now. So I was asking to go ahead and purchase that for thirty eight seventy five to get that LiDAR back in operation.
It's in, it's in your budget also, isn't it?
Yes, sir. Uh, the last item would be, uh, form of information would be to the Airtron handheld driver's license scanner. These scanners will be purchased for each one of the federal units as I like to feel. Uh, it flows up to the original laptop that's in the vehicle now. Uh, once the officer makes contact with an offender or driver, all they need to do is hold his driver's license up to the scanner. And it reads the driver's license and goes into the computer at that time. It cuts down, uh, having to make a lot of contacts with central to get information back. And it cuts down the officer, offender, uh, timeframe he's out with it and gets him back on the road quicker. And they're out there. Um, all right. Contacted the company that we're using that for. Um, uh, it didn't, and it's very incompatible as they recommend, uh, this Airtron hand scanner to work with their product.
Cause it takes information from your card, how far the driver's license, and they, and neither puts, if you have, have to give a, a citation or even a warning. You know, print the information on it automatically.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Pretty true, just in case we don't, we need to.
Right. Okay. I'll go to item number seven then. Newer Police Department expenditure K nine barrier for explorer. Council Evans again.
Go ahead, Chief.
Yes, uh, this is a purchase, um, I was wanting to purchase it early because I did have an officer that's already going to, uh, K nine training in the end of March. But it's been a hiccup. The officer has actually put in his reservation as of yesterday, he will not be going. But I still wanna push forward with this K nine program and I wanna go ahead and order the cage because it's the end of the budget and I'm gonna go ahead and, uh, find funds without a grant to get another K nine for the city. And then put another officer in the position, so we still have two K nine units for the city.
Okay.
Okay, and is this a budget item already or do you need approval on this?
Um, it was not placed in the budget. I would wanna use some of the funds that we had on the rake, the vehicle that we had with the thirty six thousand dollars that we had in that line item. That, um, was already used for that vehicle. I wanna use some of those funds for that.
Are all those funds still available?
They are actually, we asked to do a budget amendment. We were going to allocate portions of the vehicles and a portion to machinery and equipment, which is what that would come out of machinery. Your, your lawyer, is it gonna come out of?
Yes, it'll come out of machinery.
What do we file out the other question?
Probably the next meeting.
Will you approve it?
Yes, sir. I, I believe that we approved this, uh, expenditure for the Police Department for the K nine barrier. For. My second.
Okay, any discussion? You hear that? All papers say aye?
Aye.
All the poll, same sign? That's approved. Thank you very much. All right, now we'll be having comments from the council. That was pretty good, wasn't it? Yeah, good job, everybody. Post one.
I don't think I have anything.
Okay. Thank you.
Great. Again, I'd just like to say thank you to all our employees for the hard work that they put in for the citizens of Centerville.
Post four.
So, um, Mayor, I'd like to, uh, thank former Councilman Wright for coming in and certainly bringing that, sharing that information with us. Uh, I think that, uh, I think sometimes it speaks volumes when we have citizens who willing to come forward and identify things that, that we need to take a look at. In some cases, actually, you know, uh, take action on. And so I think that, um, we certainly appreciate it. And I know that the information was captured by our staff and they're going to make sure the law enforcement go out, follow up on it. And, uh, we expect to hear some feedback from it, so. Also, I'd like to take this moment to, uh, I don't know if you're.
We don't. I don't think.
Okay, so I'd like to take this moment to introduce, uh, Ms. Shannon Bryant, our new economic development director. And so, um, it, so if you would, if you'd like to just tell, give us a bit of who you are, you know, and. That's it.
I guess I can stand up over here either. Hello, my name is Shannon Bryant. Uh, today's my first day of the job. I'm pretty busy. Uh, got a lot going on. Uh, I am a citizen of Perry. I recently moved there. I've lived in Macon for the last twenty one years and, uh, married, or got married a few years ago and moved to Perry in the last year. And, uh, like I said, started here today. I'm looking forward to helping the city move forward, uh, with economic, economic development endeavors as well as any other projects that I can do assistance with. Um, I'm hoping to get in with them all next week and meet them and their leadership and, and kinda create a relationship off the bat with them. Um, as well as any other projects that maybe kind of trickling in or, or you know anything about. If there's anything I can help any of you with, please reach out to me. I'm working on getting my information out to you. I was actually doing that right before the meeting. So I'll be sending you my contact information tomorrow. Uh, so if you need me for anything, please feel free to reach out, um, for anything you might need.
Thank you very much. Welcome. We're very happy to have you with us.
Thank you.
I'm sorry. What happened? Okay. Um, I went to a meeting today, it was called State of the Face. Robbins Airport Face. They had four speakers there. They, just excellent, excellent. I believe you were there.
Uh, I was. I think Sherry was.
Yep. And, yeah, it was an excellent speech. Uh, Robbins Airport Face appreciates everything the community around him do for them. And they also, um, you'll recognize and support you with that.